To order. And I'm just navigating multiple screens, pardon me. So has everybody been able to look at the consent agenda? Well, actually not the consent. Bear with me one second, let me. Thank you, you're on screen. All right. Sorry, the consideration of accounts. So has everybody been able to see that? Oh, I apologize, what am I doing? So we call this meeting to order. And I'd like to open up for a public comment period. My apologies, folks, I was multitasking. Hello?
Folks are gonna have to find way to use the raise hand feature or to send a question via the chat to be able to participate in the public comment.
So I am.
Hey, Chris, it might be beneficial. There's at least one public presentation tonight on Aetna Insurance in Hartford. And I don't want people to necessarily think that they have to make their comments now about that before they're actually here the presentation.
That's perfectly okay, thank you for that. And so we'll move forward. So then I'll just move this along quickly and then we'll go to the approval of the minutes from the August meeting. Eldred, Erin, you guys good with that?
I am.
He? On my screen here, yeah, yeah, Chris, they look very good, actually. I'm good though.
Thank you. And then consideration of accounts, I'm sure everybody looked at that and want to point out the $15,000 for No Kids Hungry grant. Any questions or comments regarding that? Okay, so.
Can you summarize how it works? Can you summarize our work for the people who are in the meeting but would not know about that?
I cannot, but I'm sure Amanda Verba can help us with that.
Hi, everyone. So typically in a finance committee meeting, right, we review the consideration of accounts. And I'm sorry that I'm going to turn my head because I actually have my agenda on another screen here. So you'll have to get my profile, I apologize. So typically on the consideration of accounts, right, and I'm going to have, I believe Maggie, if we can unmute Maggie, that is our treasurer, Emily Shite. She can just make a couple of comments about the treasurer's report. And then we can unmute Angela Jordan as well. And she can make a couple of comments for folks on the 4.2, 4.3, and 4.4. So in that way, folks can just get a very brief understanding of these things. And then we can move on to the regular meeting. So if we have Maggie, I see Emily there, great. And I'm going to see if I can unmute you. And Tricia, I don't, there you are. Where's Emily? Great, go ahead, Emily.
Hi, everyone. Okay, so I just want to point out a couple of things on the treasurer's report real quick. First of all, the one thing, it was not reflected on the June report, but we did have a $4.5 million CD at the five-star bank. When I was setting up all the bank accounts, that one just was bad. I'm just getting there, finishing up some of these oddball ones. This is a CD that comes due in March, so I have time to get that reflected. And I noticed that I didn't put it on the June report. That's primarily the health insurance reserve. Now, what you'll see is what I did add under the Health Benefits Fund, you'll see that Health Reserve CD. That money I am showing in the Health Benefits Fund, but our audit report is not quite finished yet. But one thing we have done is we had to move that reserve money back into the general fund under reserves because it's more appropriately needs to be located there, but is still restricted to health insurance reserve funding. So I just wanted to point that out. It's the big difference that you might see a discrepancy between your June and July treasurer's report because I didn't have that CD reflected on the June report. I actually am not too familiar with this $15,000 grant, but it was money that we secured from the Share the Strength, which is a, I guess this is some kind of grant or group that actually goes and supports all food service organizations. That's, and we qualified for it with this COVID thing and all the outreach that we are doing for the food service program. I wasn't involved in applying for it. I think that was done through Beth Kraus. And I actually just was able to obtain most of that material within the last two weeks. So, and so I haven't had a chance, but I know that all that funding went towards the purchasing of the food and feeding the public over the summer months. And that's what it needs to be used for. But other than that, I really can't give you too much information on that because I wasn't involved in writing that grant. So I apologize for that. But it was, it was, we were one of the few school districts that did receive that grant. So it was a coup for us. Are there any other questions that I can answer about the treasurer's report? And you're all muted, so that makes it easy on me. But if there are, you can always reach out to me and I'm happy to answer any questions beyond this meeting, okay? Amanda?
Thank you, Maggie.
Oh. Rather easy, Beth Kraus is the one that really, you know, manages the C Fund, which is the school lunch fund. And so that was able to come into their grant and sustain their operations. And I apologize, I had some internet issues.
Okay, so we're good to move forward? All right. So we'll move forward with a 5.1 reopening plan?
Yes, sir, Mr. Malcolm, thank you for the opportunity, myself and Ms. Towkin, Mr. Van Kuren. We will take this particular item. And we wish to frame, thanks to all of the board members for being here tonight and for giving us this opportunity to talk about reopening planning often. We were just in front of you last week. And we wish to share some updates based on what we've learned and what we've been talking about this past week. I mean, we will continue to hopefully update you often because as we've learned, things change very quickly. The guidance, decisions, and the shifts to meet the needs of our young people. We've talked over the past month. Well, we had a great virtual opening to our school district this week. While it was a good opening, it still was a bit different and unique. And I'm gonna tell you what, I'm mourning that having our young people in our spaces. And as we've said, we are committed to opening up our in-person, opening up for in-person instruction in our spaces on October the 5th. We needed to delay as we needed to upgrade and enhance our HVAC systems and deal with supply chain issues and other issues. And, you know, we just spent the last two hours in facilities, talking about all of the enhancements and that have been ongoing to our HVAC systems. And as I said, a complication, when we open up for in-person learning and when we welcome adults and young people into our spaces, our spaces will be better than they've ever been. And again, just tune into facility conversations and you're here, what we're doing. We also had to delay because of the health and mobility data that we wanted to monitor very closely over this past month. And, you know, as we've been monitoring that data, it has remained stable. And as we've heard from Dr. Snedeker, we've heard from our medical community, we've heard from many folks, the data right now is as good as it's probably ever going to be in our community. The data right now, the health data, the mobility data, what's happening with this, with the virus, would support us being in person. And then that other, then another issue that was, we were facing that required us to delay our opening for in-person instruction was our staffing challenges. They have been significant, not just here, but all over our region and our state. For the folks who monitor the news coming out around the state, we get these things called NISBA clips. And each day I sort of read those and I squirm and I cringe as we're hearing from school districts all over our state who are struggling to staff our buildings in the midst of this pandemic for a number of reasons, which we'll get into some today. But for us, we've had those similar, we've had similar issues. As folks remember, we offered up our families and teachers the option to choose whether or not they were going to be in person or virtual. We made that decision back in July. It seems like a long time ago, but we made that decision back in July to offer that up to our families and to our own teachers. What we learned, the data came back around 56% of our students have chosen to be in person, whereas only 32% of our teachers chose to be in person. As I've said, since we've learned that, I said it a complication, those numbers don't match up for us to provide a high-quality in-person experience for our young people. So we have been working hard and I can't thank the leadership of our teacher's association, Adam Piesek, Keith Thompson, Catherine Senei, those folks have been outstanding. We, Lily can attest to this, we spent a lot of time together over the last couple of weeks, engaging in hard conversations about how we can staff our buildings. And we, you know, we had to, we, I, we had to make some tough decisions. I had a conversation with our teachers yesterday where we had to shift. We had to reverse the decision that we had made. We had to say to them that I cannot honor the choice that many people chose. Putting young people in our community first, we are committed to offering an in-person experience. And to do that, we will need more teachers coming back. And I'm the first one to say I did not want to have that conversation. I'm disappointed in not being able to, not being able to provide that option to our teachers. But I also am confident in what we're doing for our young people. And the teachers I work with, ones I've been working with for the last decade, are having, have that same commitment. And while not everyone's happy about it, we know what we're here to do. And we're, we're gonna do it. And so with that, we, you know, we've been having that conversation about what will it look like to welcome teachers back into our spaces to address the staffing challenges that are not over yet. We are, we're asking our teachers to come back, but you know, there are many accommodations we are going to be providing to our teachers here based on the accommodations that are in labor law. So we will be working through that over the coming weeks. We do know that we won't have every one of our teachers return to an in-person experience here, which will create some challenges for us. And we are going to continue to work through that. We've had, we've also met with the reopening, we opened our CSD team. We've talked about what that group would look like over the past couple of weeks. We've invited folks, we've met in person, many conversations. Thank you, Lily, thank you, Carrie Burke, for your facilitation of great dialogue with our community. As, you know, our community brought some thoughts and ideas to us about how to address the staffing challenges, our HVAC challenges, our schedules, both the elementary and the secondary level. And this may be new information for folks, we've sort of intimated it over the past couple of weeks. We will be shifting, again, what a model we're going to be putting in front of families. At the elementary level, we, we still, we feel like we can offer the five-day in-person experience and option for our families, for our families. And we can offer, we can honor the folks who've chosen to be in a virtual setting five days a week. We're working through that with our principals, with our teachers, and we're confident we can do that. At the secondary level, we are looking at a significant shift in what we had proposed earlier. Earlier, we proposed doing a five-day in-person experience or a five-day virtual experience. Like every other school district, we've been able to find, frankly, in our region, in our state, we're going to be now moving towards a hybrid approach. We will no longer be able to offer the five days in-person experience for our young people at the middle and high school. It's going to be looking more like the hybrid approaches that you're seeing all over our state with an A-day, B-day approach with a synchronous day. And Lily and a second is going to give you some more details about that. But, you know, in working with our teacher leaders, administrators, the reopen ICSD team of families, all of our stakeholders, this is an option that we're bringing forward and one that we think is going to be sustainable in the midst of the pandemic that we're all facing. I mean, that's going to be a shift for our families when we announce that and when we put that information out there. But it's going to be one that one will honor the student choices in their schedules. One of the things that we're hoping to do and we feel confident we can do is maintain the course offerings that has made our school district so great. That is going to be different from many other school districts who've had to really condense their course offerings and still did a hybrid approach. We feel like we can keep the number of elective, the number of AP courses, the number of great instructional opportunities for our young people in this hybrid approach on an A-day, B-day schedule. So the schedules that our young people have now, we feel like can transition to, transition as we move to an in-person and virtual experience. It will be different. And here's, we've been saying to folks, right now perfection, we are going to achieve perfection right now. This is going to be tough. We have a lot of work to do. We're going to be learning a lot of lessons, we're going to work together with hopes that we will get better each day. But this experience at the secondary level will look like us having young people engaged who are both virtual and those who are in person with an educator at the same time. We are moving towards, towards a block schedule, which will allow us some flexibility. And I've heard from many teachers already about how they're looking to use that extended time and creative ways and engage young people who are both in person in front of them and virtually a model. I mean, you can go on Twitter or Instagram right now and see school districts all over the state and country using a similar model. And, you know, some have, a lot of lessons learned already. But I trust our educators to navigate this. And again, it won't be great at first, but I trust our educators to design and engineer an experience that will meet the needs of our learners. But that's going to be a shift that we want to, we want to hear our board's thoughts on tonight at the secondary level. But, you know, again, I haven't had many good options to put in front of y'all since March. This is the, the best option we can put in front of you right now. Not to say it's good, because I would love to have all of our young people back in a space in person, but with the CDC guidelines, with our space constraints, with the staffing constraints, with the, with us wanting to offer all that we can and all we have offered in the past, it has significantly impacted us being able to do the five days in person. But we still feel like we can do much with the hybrid approach. So that was a lot. I would love to hear your thoughts and reactions. There, you know, again, I'm asking for our community's patience and understandings. Right now, I know there are significant emotions associated with all of this. There, folks are fearful, folks are angry. Some are very happy about what we're doing, but it focuses emotions all over the place. Trust me, I've been carrying those emotions for the last six months. So I know it, I get the emails, I see people. But I'm here to tell you that I'm committed and so is my, our team of educators here to meet the needs of our young people. And oftentimes, and unfortunately, that makes many adults uncomfortable. And it pushes us to make decisions, reverse decisions, go back to the drawing board, try some things, fail with hopes that we continuously get better. So that's where we are this week. I would love to hear your thoughts, your reactions, and your questions. Lily and Bob and I are here to address any of those during this time we have.
Um, I, I mean, I can start because I always, I always have something to say, I guess. I just, you know, everyone knows I, how I feel about how impossible this is because we all recognize that there's no good answers. And since this is a public meeting, I feel like I don't want to get on a soapbox. But I do want to state that, you know, as board members, we're hearing from the public and we're hearing all sides of this. And sometimes we are in our little bubbles. And I, there's, there's a group of people that I sometimes hear from that they don't understand why schools opening. And, and, and then there's another group of people who really, really need schools to open. And, and there's a divide where they're not seeing each other's thoughts or comments because that's the way our world works. And we see that as a school board and we see that, you know, you see that as administrators. And I think it's important for us to remember, for all of us to remember that we need to step out of our own bubbles and we need to practice that empathy piece that is so critical because our situations do not reflect everyone's situation. And on a personal level, my situation is very, very different. My family doesn't have a choice to go back. But that doesn't mean that I don't think that some families shouldn't go back or many families shouldn't. So that's kind of my statement there because some of the emails that we're getting and the comments we're getting are so impassioned one way or the other. And, and I just want everyone to know that as board members, we are absorbing both sides and we're practicing empathy when we hear both sides of this. But there's always, there's always a gray area and that's what we're dealing with now. There's no black and white here. The one, I guess the one kind of question I have, you know, when we talk about that empathy piece and diving in, I'm also hearing from a lot of teachers and I'm really feeling for them because, you know, yes, they're essential workers, but this isn't, they aren't, they aren't in the medical community, you know? When they chose this career path, they didn't choose to be exposed to a pandemic. You know, they didn't choose to be exposed to school shootings either. And, and it's just really hard. And I feel for them because some people are not going to qualify for ADA. You know, we've got a lot of parents that, you know, the person who teaches is also the one that has to deal with the children. And there is no childcare. And so we have teachers who might need to go back because they have no medical exemption, but they have nothing, they have nowhere to take their kids. And I just, I just, how are we going to support our, not just, sorry, not just our teachers? How can we support our staff in going back when they have some really, really difficult obstacles in doing that? And some of them are extraordinarily uncomfortable in returning to the classroom, even though they don't have a medical exemption?
Thanks, Erin. Thanks for one, recognizing the need for empathy right now. It was good for me to hear personally and professionally to hear you say that and to ask folks for that. While I have my own needs and as I'm struggling through this and dealing with, in absorbing everyone's anxiety, I am also seeing the needs of my team. And this is a tough one, so I appreciate you saying that, just flat out, thank you. And secondly, I'll turn to Bob and Lily. That question about childcare is one that's been on our hearts and minds often. We've shared some resources and thinking with some folks, but we know that that's going to be an issue. We are helping and supporting folks. And we're also hoping to engage in some one-on-one case-by-case dialogues with folks in the coming weeks. Bob, Lily, you want to share some of the resources and thinking that we've shared with folks who are in a similar situation?
Thank you, Dr. Brown. Good evening, everyone. We, in the letter that Dr. Brown sent out to ITA and will be disseminated further to staff, embedded in there's a link to a, I think it's a seven or eight-page document that lists all the various scenarios. It has seven different scenarios that that staff and faculty might find themselves as it relates to COVID issues. And the final scenario, the G, I think it is, are extraordinary circumstances, much to, much to Erin's point, the, those cases that don't fit neatly into what the law, either the federal law, state law, or one of our contracts provides for, for employees. And I, in fact, had my first meeting with an employee today that didn't fit into any categories. And the story was heart-wrenching. And we're going to work very diligently to help that employee meet the needs of family as well as provide for students in the classroom. And I think we, I think we've come up with a good solution. So right now, there are about 20 employees that have reached out and we'll meet with them one-on-one. The union leadership has been really supportive in this effort as well. So you know, I think Dr. Brown used the word empathy and, and I, you know, I think that everyone is embodying that from the union leadership to administrative leadership here to the board. And it's really, it's really wonderful to work in that scenario and that realm. So more to come, but so far we're off to a good start.
Additionally, I'd just like to note that we stay in close contact with folks at the county level at the Child Development Council. And they keep very close tabs in terms of opening. So they're gathering information just about daily about current capacity and where each of our, each of the in-home daycares and the daycare programs are in terms of spaces available, et cetera. So they're, they're a great resource and and I encourage folks to reach out there as well.
Could I just get some clarification about what the hybrid model is going to look like at middle and high school?
Sure. We have two different cohorts of students. So one cohort will come on Mondays and Tuesdays and then learn from home the last three days of the week. Everyone will engage in an asynchronous learning day on Wednesdays. So that means that that, that learning can be done anytime. And it's, so it's, and there will be things per, for example, at the middle school level, things like office hours, et cetera, offered during that time. So students will have learning activities and experiences that they'll engage in on Wednesday on their, on their own, right? And then another cohort of students will be present in buildings on Thursday and Friday, right? So essentially, we are, we're decreasing the number of children who will be in the building at any given time. So we're decreasing the contact that children and staff are going to be making throughout the day, decreasing the numbers of students, of course, making hallway transitions much more seamless, et cetera, even given the lengthy passing periods that we've implemented. Whereas this also, of course, means, as Dr. Brown alluded to earlier, that teachers will be teaching the students who are in person that day and also the, the students who are at home, right? Folks have been, as Dr. Brown said, wrapping their heads around this for many months around, around the country, right? And we have the luxury of learning from both our regional colleagues right here in the TFT region and nationally as well in order to implement models that are flexible. Again, I've been, I, I can't echo Dr. Brown's sentiments in that ITA leadership, people like Keith Thompson, really thinking through the best ways to flexibly meet kids' needs in the midst of experiencing this both, right? In-person and virtual experience, it's been, it's been exceptional. So I think, you know, we're, we're in a place where we're headed in the same direction, I think, in terms of thinking about the learning goals of a particular lesson, maybe starting whole group for a short amount of time and then splitting into smaller groups. So kids are actually making meaning together through discussion, through research, through investigation with one another, and then perhaps coming back together. So we have these longer chunks of time that can allow for more flexibility there as well.
So, um, the, the students who are opting for completely distance learning, they will also have that Wednesday of asynchronous. And then the other four days, they'll be online. They're anticipating on.
That's right. And during that Wednesday day, I just want to point out as well, that's going to be really key for our secondary folks in particular, as they're learning together to utilize Canvas, which is our learning management system and, and learning to engage students in both platforms simultaneously.
Right. So on the Wednesdays, will teachers Right. So on the Wednesdays, will teachers be expected to be in the building?
So we have, will certainly work through all of that with ITA leadership as we further define those Wednesdays.
Lily, I have a question about extracurricular activities. Under these new model, how will extracurricular activities be incorporated?
Sure. And Dr. Brown, you may want to start if you wanted to talk about athletics first and then I can.
Yeah, hot off the presses, just this afternoon, Section 4 decided to postpone fall sports. So we're at a January 4th start date for a fall. The section's looking to condense seasons. So we will not be starting our athletics right now as far as our sports season. Which, you know, I'm disappointed personally about that. I was not in favor of that kind of a delay. But without having anyone to compete against, we're sort of, we're sort of tied to delaying sports here until January. But that's athletics only. And I know we have other extracurricular activities that Lily can speak to.
We do. And we're starting those virtually. Things may change, but right now, we're, they're all virtual right now.
So in terms of athletics, if a student had been on a team that was supposed to compete in the fall, will they have some connection with their teammates remotely still?
Yeah, Samantha Little, Stephanie Bala, they've done outstanding work to keep our young people connected throughout this pandemic. And they're already working on what we will do now and into the future to keep young people connected. There are multiple programs I'm going to engage them with. The workouts will start. And we're in discussions now about when we could do some, how we can start off-season training in our, in our spaces. So we will keep our young people involved and, and busy. It's just that the competitions won't take place now at all.
Thanks.
This is Pat. I would just like to express my appreciation for all the teacher and administrative planning that is allowing the breadth of our curriculum at the high school to continue. Anyone who's ever had a child at the high school or taught at the high school knows that that is an extremely complex schedule to coordinate all the many, many different offerings to different levels that we've had. I would, I'd just like to ask two questions. Are there some factors, some facets of that schedule that we will have to lose for this year? And then could you comment on any plans for widespread testing of students and teachers at all levels? Are, is the district doing anything about that? Or are we just leaving that with Tompkins County Health? Thank you.
Lily, how about I talk about testing a little bit, then you talk about the schedule there. You know, again, I've engaged in multiple conversations, but the Cornell folks, the task force, quite frankly, that's been doing, that's been in charge of the surveillance testing. We are not in a position right now, whether it's lawfully or infrastructure-wise, to support the testing of our young people and adults. Again, Tompkins County Office free testing, we've encouraged folks to take, to do that. But as far as us offering surveillance testing or an entry test, which we've heard from other school districts, we are not in a position to do that for, for many reasons right now.
And then Pat, in terms of the course offerings, we're maintaining the, the level of electives and the courses that we're currently providing and that we're, we're starting in earnest tomorrow in the virtual space. You know, we have a couple of days of really orienting students to these new platforms and this experience. I will say, there are of course a number of challenges associated with labs. And those are, you know, our science teachers, they're awesome and have a lot of content to cover. And so there are certainly details that we continue to have to work out in terms of ensuring that we're, you know, working within the typical number of minutes, instructional minutes that we've, we've had in the past.
Dr. Brown, the, the hybrid model at the middle and high school, that really mirrors what, what our neighbors are doing, Lansing, Dryden, Newfield, for all grades. They're, you know, they went to that model and, and I, you know, their, their fully digital experience is, is less than what we will offer, I believe. But, but certainly it is, we're going to have some company in trying to meet the needs, you know, and dealing with that hybrid model. Having five days a week at the elementary level is critical. We haven't talked about that much yet, but it's really developmentally, that's, that's very good news that we are able to do five days a week for, for, well, pre-K to, to fifth grade. And that's, that will be very important. We will see the benefits of that certainly going forward. I appreciate the, the effort by everyone to come up with, you know, well, realistic solutions. As we, when we had Cornell here a few weeks ago, Cornell realizing that, you know, the actual, what is the reality on the ground and meeting the need, the students are here. And so making huge efforts to make sure that there is in-person instruction. But Cornell is really a hybrid model as well. Not all classes are in-person. And so there's, you know, there are many classes that are done, you know, online. But again, making sure that there is, there is connections, there is in-person class time for college students. And that's, you know, so that's again, that's, that's a good model, frankly, for us to emulate right here, right now. And eventually, sure, we will, as, as we move through this, we'll be able to add more, more kids and more families that will want to be in-person. And we can roll out, you know, athletics and orchestra, band and choral and everything else and Code Red and all the other activities that really make this a great district. But the effort that has gone into making, ensuring that we have an in-person option for, for every family that, that wants it is key. It's critical. And it's, and I appreciate staff and teachers working together with the administration and with the board to, to come up with solutions to, to make that happen. So I appreciate, yes, where the, the model may constantly or consistently change, but the, the effort to provide that educational experience will not. And so that's, so I certainly appreciate where we're headed and look forward to October 5th.
Thank you, Ms. James. And I must stress, as I've stressed before, this is all depending on our health data staying where it is. And as we're learning from the Cornell model, people in our community get very nervous every time there is a reported case. And as we hear from our colleagues all over the state, it's happening there too. So again, I would ask folks, please, let's stay diligent so that we can get our young people back into a space. If that health data shifts, then we're having a different conversation and that's not one I want to have. So thank you.
Dr. Brown, I think I want to just reiterate what Erin stated, that the, the multiple perspectives and the impassioned and eloquent statements of multiple perspectives, is something that we've been trying to negotiate since the beginning. And I think I said it to you maybe last week, the only constant is change and uncertainty at this moment. And so saying much more to the community that under no circumstance do we want change. We're not looking for change. We're not planning for change. And yet we still may find ourselves in that situation. And so we are trying to do and plan the best we can with the information that we have and keeping safety of our educators and our young people at the forefront. Who is just pulling on my leg. So there you go. So I think that's important for us to do, that, that notion of empathy is absolutely essential as we try to move forward and think about what's best. I've seen part of this model work elsewhere and it's worked quite effectively. And so does it mean again, that it's the ideal model? But a combination of some in-person and virtual instruction is important. And then lastly, as I was preparing for my own lecture tomorrow with my students, a reminder that, we've said it before, that we've had 400 years of in-person instruction and have tried our best to perfect that model and less than 20 years of digital instruction, which means sort of 95% of the time the education has existed as we know it in this country, it's had a particular model. So we're, we're going to need some time to work out a new learning management system, Canvas. We're going to need some time to find ways in which to engage and deliver curriculum in a manner that we've never been asked to deliver it before. And so not just empathy, but patience and let's continue to work together, share ideas, share innovations. And I'm looking forward to the continued exchange as we move forward. So appreciate to ITA, ITA leadership, to our teaching aides, to our bus drivers who dropped off my grandbaby's iPad yesterday. You know, very much aware of the considerable efforts that people are putting forth. So thank you. And we'll keep, we'll keep working together.
Hey guys, this is Eldred. I have a question. So I sat in on the committee to reopen the schools, which was fantastic, learned a great deal. And, and issue came up that wasn't addressed in the time that I participated. So I'm just curious to get your thoughts about it. And the issue lives at the intersection of two realities. One, we already addressed, that we're going to have anxious adults who may not fit either the, either of the 12 steps that Bob laid out, right? Issues that might mean somebody falls under an ADA or FLMA umbrella. So let's just say there might be teachers out there, other staff members, who either do or don't fit under that umbrella. And as those people interact with kids in the, in the physical world, not the virtual world, they're going to be, I think the word that someone used in the session was, they're going to be in a position they haven't been in before, where they don't have disciplinary control over the behavior of students. So students might be doing what kids would do, even though we like to think our kids are going to take the protocol seriously. Some kids may just be being kids. Question was raised, what are the options for redress? What are the options for discipline? What are the options for dealing with those kids and bringing them back to reality about what's at stake that are going to be employed? That are going to be there for those adults? And it's a long way of saying, I guess, how do we ensure that adults are going to feel that they can advocate for themselves? I've heard us talk about the need to be kind to kids and to be restorative to kids, but there's going to be a real fear that adults have because they're going to be dealing with the real, real situations at home. Just some thoughts about that. Lily, I didn't get a chance to talk to you since then, but that's something that was like just hanging heavy in the session that I was in. How will adults feel that they have control?
Could I interject something? I'm feeling a little concerned that I know there are a lot of people on this call who are waiting to hear the presentation about insurance. This is a finance committee meeting and I feel like we're really veering into territory that has nothing to do with finance and that we're going to be having a board meeting next Tuesday. And we're going to be talking about the reopening plan. And so this conversation, I think, is, is better postponed till then, given that we have, you know, a couple dozen people on the call who are here for a very different reason.
Hello. Thank you, Moira. It was on the agenda and I do hear exactly what you're saying. And we can move that along because out of consideration for those folks. But reopening planning is also a finance meeting because if you look at 5.3, you know, the spending that's associated with that is part of this. But I definitely hear what you're saying. So if anybody has any more comments or questions, then we'll move to 5.2, the health insurance items. Any other questions, comments?
I would just say, I will make sure we address Mr. Harris's thoughts. And I think there was a question in there somewhere when we, when we come back together on Tuesday. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Brown.
Chris, and I would also just add, I understand you just said it as well, but we are going to have to spend some time having conversations about the finances of reopening. And I know it's on the agenda later on, but I'm going to be interested in what does that mean? In particular, giving some of the budget cuts at the state level, some of the federal funding that may or may not come our way. And so I just want to make sure that, you know, that we are focused on that as well. And maybe that happens at a board meeting. So I also understand what Moira is saying, but as you indicated, there are going to be some, some significant financial implications for whatever reopening plan we do above and beyond what we just talked about at the facilities meeting as well.
Okay, Mr. Van Kuren, you are up.
Thank you, Mr. Malcolm. Good evening, everyone. And, and first thing, thank you to all retirees who have waited patiently. I know that reopening obviously is a topic that we have, have to discuss and get through with the October 5th in-person opening. And kids, of course, are learning right now, as you heard, online. Tonight, I'm going to keep my, my comments really short and then turn it over to Christina Braga and Ashley Barnes from EMV, who are the experts in this area. And they can take us through this evening's presentation. I just want folks to understand tonight's meeting, as you heard, is, is a policy committee meeting. It is not a Board of Education meeting, so no vote will happen tonight. No decision's going to be made tonight. Really, we would just have, we have two interests, as I've said before in this, on this topic. There's the, and those interests are not in conflict in any way. There's the duty, the, the law and ethical duty for us to protect the benefits of retirees and also the fiduciary duty to expend taxpayer funds in the most prudent fashion we can. So every few years, we will shop the plan to see, you know, in the highly competitive world of health insurance, to see which company wants to cut us the best deal, recognizing that the overriding principle is that benefits cannot be diminished whatsoever. So we have reviewed the proposal by Aetna. EMV has reviewed it. They'll, they'll take you through that review here in a moment. We are fully confident that it meets the threshold of same. And in some cases, there's some enhancements to the plan. We will also, as we did before when we switched to Hartford, we will in writing indicate our obligation and our, our desire to make sure that the plan is at least as good or better. And then there's also for Aetna, there is a lower increase in cost. And that's not a, it's not a cute way of saying savings. Healthcare is a $20 million business for this district now and it is rising every year. And so there is no savings when it comes to these healthcare managers. It is really lowering the trajectory of increase in costs. So with that said, I will turn it over to EMV. And I'm hoping they I'm hoping they can. Okay. Christina, are you able to hop on? Are you on?
Bob, I'm not sure who the.
Ah, can you hear me now?
Yes, there we go. I knew. Thanks, Christina.
No problem. I actually, I kept hitting the unmute button and it wasn't quite working.
There we go. All right.
Screen around here. All right. Good evening, everybody. Thank you so much for having me. I'm Christina Braga from EMV. And for all of the retirees on this call, I'm so sorry you have to see my face and listen to my voice again. You've been listening to my voice all summer long, so bless your hearts. But for everyone that's here tonight, I just wanted to give you the overview of Aetna, how that came about, and then go through the product. And once we go through the product, Bob, would you be able to share the screen or would that be someone else perhaps?
Without reviewing this with Amanda, I see that you have two screens going. Is it possible on one of them, you can share the document?
I'm, I'm going to mute here and Christina, I'm going to queue up. Would you like the, you want the Aetna Hartford side by side? Is that correct?
Please.
Okay, I'll momentarily.
Thank you. Well, that's okay. I can give the background while you're doing that. So like Bob said, every few years we do go to the market. However, when we see or hear about trends in the marketplace, especially as it relates to school districts, we do ask if you would like to market. So in your case, a few years ago, we went to Hartford. That was the best product for retirees at the time. It was a Medicare supplement plan, had more competitive rates. What we found over time is that the Medicare Advantage plans finally caught up with where the Medicare Supplement plans had been. So before Medicare Advantage plans would only allow for co-pays. They wouldn't allow for a passive network. There are a lot of restrictions. So of course, the coverage wouldn't be as good or better. Now with the Medicare Advantage plans, they have turned over and now they allow for those benefits that we really needed to be as good or better. So we shopped the marketplace. We actually went to the entire marketplace. When you're talking about Medicare products, though, not every carrier is allowed to sell in every county. So that limited us a little bit. Also, the fact that you have very custom plans and different bargaining units that also cut down on the competition a little bit. So really what we were left with is Aetna and Exelis. Exelis did provide an offering, however, they were more expensive and the benefits didn't match. So that really left us with Aetna to look at. Then the next question I often get is, well, you know, how was Aetna more expensive? It must be offering less coverage. I want to address that. So on the Medicare Supplement Plan, it is receiving government subsidy through the pharmacy benefit. So that's how it is able to be a little bit cheaper. With a Medicare Advantage Plan, which is what Aetna is, it receives subsidy on the medical and the RX. So because it can receive more subsidy, they're often more advantageous financially. So that being said, we took the Hartford Plan and put it next to Aetna. And we can certainly go through the components. The top part, I want to explain how this is set up. The benefit will be in the first column. You'll see Medicare 2020 benefits and then you'll see the Hartford. So remember, the Medicare Supplement Plan today is Medicare first. So everything runs through Medicare and then Hartford picks up on the backend. So Medicare is running behind the scenes. So that's why we've listed the Medicare benefits. But to you, that's pretty much irrelevant because all you really see and care about is the Hartford column. Okay? Then in the tan column, we have the Aetna Group Medicare Advantage Plan. I've also gotten many questions about the Medicare Advantage because people are doing their research, trying to be good consumers, and they're pulling up some negative information about the Medicare Advantage Plans. So I want to encourage you to look up information regarding group plans. Individual plans definitely have limitations. This would be group sponsored, run by Ithaca, and does not have the limitations that an individual plan has. So I encourage you, if you have more questions about that, definitely call our office and let us know. But we'll go through some of these benefits too. You can see, we'll start right with office visit. You'll see that's equal. There's no copay, whereas under the Hartford, you can see it's 100% after Medicare. Remember, it's picking up the percentage after Medicare, so you pay nothing. Aetna, they are Medicare. They're replacing Medicare. So it's just a $0 copay right out of the gate. Chiropractic care today is covered 100%, but if you wanted to go for maintenance care, which was above and beyond, you'd have a copay for that. With Aetna, you don't have to worry about that. There's no copay and there's no limit. So that's an enhancement for members. Acupuncture wasn't covered. It would be covered under Aetna. This is a reimbursement program. So the beautiful thing is you can go to any acupuncturist, submit for reimbursement and that would be covered. Physical exams, there are, believe it or not, there are some random tests that Medicare doesn't cover. So Hartford had an allowance for that, a $500 annual max allowance if you happen to have those certain services. Under Aetna, that's covered in full. They don't break it out separately. You don't have to worry about that. Then we have adult immunizations, a lot of the preventive things all covered in full. Routine eye exams are one nice enhancement that's not covered today. But under the Aetna Plan, you'd actually get one exam every 12 months at a $0 copay. So that would be an added benefit for members. The next section is eyewear, frames and lenses. For the most part, that was only covered under the plan if it was medically related. Under the Aetna Plan, while they do have that medical component, there's also an above and beyond benefit for eyewear. You'd have a $100 eyewear reimbursement every 24 months that you'd be able to use. You'd get a pair of glasses, you'd submit for reimbursement and you could get up to $100 every other year. Hearing the veils are the same. Another enhancement is hearing aids. Every 36 months, you can get up to a $1,000 reimbursement. Inpatient hospital, the inpatient mental health, all of that stays the same, covered in full, just as you experienced today. Inpatient substance abuse, skilled nursing, all of that still covered. Emergency room, still covered. Urgent care, still covered, even worldwide. And then you'll notice a lot of outpatient, outpatient radiation, chemo, substance abuse, all of that covered in full, just as it is today. Physical therapy, speech therapy, all of your therapies, diabetic supplies, durable medical equipment, prosthetics, home healthcare, hospice, dialysis, all covered in full, just as it is today. International coverage, I know that some people had concern about international coverage with Hartford. That did have a limit. So knock on wood, we've never had anyone have to use this, thank goodness. But it was a concern in the back of people's minds. With the Aetna Plan, you don't have to worry about having any type of deductible or lifetime maximum. You would, if you're traveling in another country and an emergency happened, just as you would today, or even with the Exelis Plan, you'd, you'd pay that bill. You'd have the bill translated and then you'd submit for reimbursement and then that would be covered 100%. Another nice enhancement with the Aetna Plan is silver sneakers. I know people get really excited about that. Not during COVID, of course, but COVID aside, silver sneakers is a great workout program. No matter where you are in the United States, there's usually participating facilities. So locally, if I want to go to Gold's Gym for my water aerobics and a YMCA for another class, I can, as long as they're participating, I can use the facility at no charge. And there's also some online classes too. So it's just a nice program for you to stay fit and active. At the very bottom, it just goes over the prescription drug coverage. So depending on when you retired and what plan you had, there's different prescription drug co-pays. So they are able to accommodate those exact co-pays. The only thing I want to make sure everyone's aware of, and we've talked about this at other meetings, is that while the co-pays are the same, the formularies change every year. So what is a formulary? A formulary is a big list of drugs and what tier they fall into. So even with Express Scripts today, every year, sometimes twice a year, those drugs shift around in categories. So with Aetna, they also determine where their drugs fall with a little help from Medicare. So before 1.1 happens, if you do move forward with this, we have just encouraged everyone to check the formulary and we'll have a copy of this as well as it gets closer. Just check to see what tier your drugs fall on. That way you'll know where your drug falls. Okay. I think that is really all I had on the Aetna. Amanda or Bob, is there anything else that you wanted me to cover as far as the Aetna program?
No, Christina, thank you. I think that, that was the important overview that, you know, and allowing the board and others to see that we met the threshold of same, or in some cases even a little bit better.
I just, I think the really important piece is to the experience of the user. And, you know, how does this transfer to what they're used to, coverage, their experience going to the doctors? And what does that look like for them?
Yep. Great question. So as far as member experience, everybody will get a new ID card. So now instead of using your Medicare card, you would now have an Aetna card. And that Aetna card would be what you provide your doctor with. So Aetna replaces Medicare. And as far as doctors, it should be the same. So as long as your doctor accepts Medicare or is willing to bill, there should be no issue here. There's not a separate in and out of network benefit. It's all the same. So even if you technically go to an out of network doctor or a doctor that wants to charge a little bit more, the plan picks up those extra charges. So members don't have to be concerned. Just like the Hartford, the only providers that are not included under this are opt-out or private contractors. So 98% of the doctors in the United States are covered under this plan, which is actually greater than the Exelis network. As far as enrollment too, for this, everybody would be rolled over. So there's no paperwork that would be needed. We would electronically take your information from the Hartford and move it to Aetna. So there would be no member paperwork that would be needed. The only thing from the member side really that I can think of is if you have a mail order script, you would just have to have your doctor send that in after 1.1. Like for instance, if you had any prior authorization or anything, your doctor would need to send that in as well. Other than that, there really shouldn't be any member responsibility.
I guess one of the final, go ahead, Moira. I'm sorry.
Why don't you go ahead, Bob?
Yeah, just one of the final questions, Christina, is timing. I think we hope to bring this to the Board of Education for a vote next week on the 22nd. Do another presentation for any retirees who weren't able to make tonight's meeting. But is that still the target date for the 22nd?
Yes. So in order to move forward with the plan, there would have to be a decision before October 1st. So I think we're targeting the 23rd to have that started. If you did want to move forward, that way we could implement and have plenty of time for members to receive their materials, their ID cards and everything they needed for a smooth transition.
Okay. I think the other agenda items relating to health insurance, they certainly don't relate to Aetna Hartford. Yeah.
Jump in here. So going back to the question of the, the user's experience. What we have heard sometimes in heart wrenching detail from some of our retirees about their experience with, under the Hartford, their experience of being made whole, which is something that we have promised. We've talked about this a lot. And so, but some of our retirees are reporting that they have had very, very difficult experiences getting what they believe is, is the coverage that they're entitled to. So we really need to, whether we stay with the Hartford or go to Aetna. I did ask this question earlier and Christina said that she felt that the, the bureaucratic layers with the Hartford, with Aetna would be somewhat eliminated because it replaces Medicare. They wouldn't have to negotiate both Medicare and the Hartford. But I, it's a great concern of mine that our retirees are not having to go through enormous difficulty to get what they feel that they are entitled to, what they know they're entitled to under, under the terms of their retirement.
Absolutely. No, and that's a great point, Moira. So we, let's talk about that for a minute. So with Hartford, remember, there are many layers. There's the Hartford, there's Benestar, who's the administrator. There's Express Scripts, who's the vendor, and then there's Medicare. And if you've ever tried to call Medicare, you know, it's kind of like pulling teeth. It's very difficult to get answers from Medicare. So put all those pieces together, you know, we're constantly chasing it. With Aetna, like Moira said, they're taking over Medicare. Medicare is giving them money because they're saying, here you go, do our job for us. So when we go to Aetna, there are contacts. They can actually get back to us in a speedier amount of time than what we experienced through the Hartford. So that is one thing to point out. And I will also say, I know a couple of people have asked this. The number one reason members call with a denied bill is because the doctor didn't submit through Medicare. They said, oh, this member has Hartford. I'm going to submit to Hartford. The member gets a big bill and is worried and they call our office and we say, oh, don't panic. I will call your doctor or just call your doctor back and have them submit the bill through Medicare. So it is another step, but it does cover the bill. So they call the doctor, say, hey, doc, you never ran that through Medicare. After that, the bill will be reprocessed and paid. So that is honestly the number one. The number two reason people call with a bill that's not paid is because the doctor unfortunately didn't include the proper codes or notes. So they're very general when they send stuff in. So it doesn't look like it should be covered when really it should. So again, we walk through the, with the members saying, okay, it looks here, you know, based on what you're describing, that this should be covered under the plan. So we have had a couple of members question, well, why can't you just cut me a check? Well, the plan actually does pay for this. So you have to go back to your doctor or we can assist as well. Going back to the doctor and saying, hey, doc, you know, this person had glaucoma. Can you code this correctly so that they can get it paid? And then after working with the doctor, then that does get paid. So there's really no need for reimbursement. So those are the top two reasons we see when people call in that the bills are getting denied. So I think it's just a continual education, right? Give us a call. We'll just continue to, you know, do webinars if we need to. Just here's how to submit a claim. Show your card. If your doctor has any questions, have them give us a call. We're happy to explain to them how the programs work and hopefully that'll make things a little easier.
Chris, I know on Zoom, we have a little different process, especially when there's a number of people. But I think some of the retirees may have wanted to give some comments. So there's a couple of ways to do that. You can hand on the feature and let us know you want to. You can go into chat and put your question there. And I think we have at least two questions right there and I'll read them to Christina in a second. And Chris, is there any other way for them to give at this meeting? Just unmute themselves or I don't want to like have protocol go. Yeah.
Yeah. I actually don't have Zoom control.
Yeah.
Trickster, are you out there?
I am, and I received two questions in the chat.
Yeah, let me go over the questions. And the first is, do we still have to, do retirees still have to pay Medicare Part B?
Yep, just as you do today.
Yep. And let's see if, I'm going to read this cold here. If one has a copay on meds at $6, could it change to $40 as shown on the last slide?
So if your bargaining unit has the copay structure, that's $1, $6, and that is your structure, it can't be more than $6 for a 30-day supply. Those are just separated out by the different plans that the units have. So whatever you fall under, those are your co-pays.
So in a follow-up. And a follow-up, what about premium?
Premium, I think still it just has to be determined by the district. Because everybody's going to have a different percentage and all of that.
It's the retiree premium at the time you retired, yeah.
So Tricia, please help me out here. I think, please, if there's any more questions, put them in the chat box or unless Tricia, you're able to unmute folks because there, is there a race hand option?
Actually, I'm going to pass along a question that retiree sent to me. And I've, I've heard the question and the answer before, but I think Bob is better able to articulate it. So why is the comparison being made between Aetna and the Hartford rather than Aetna and Exelis Blue Cross Blue Shield?
Excellent. Great question. Exelis Blue Cross Blue Shield was the in place prior to us going to Hartford. And so at that moment in time, the comparison was made. And just to remind folks who might not remember or might be new to this conversation, at that time when the plan moved from Exelis Blue Cross Blue Shield to Hartford, a review was done not only internally by the district and its, and ENV, but also by the unions in, they sent it to Albany to have it redone. And each of the unions did sign off saying that the benefits were at good under the Hartford plan as they were under that plan with Blue Cross Blue Shield. Now, at that moment in time, Blue Shield goes off and does their own thing. That, those plans either stop being offered or they're, they morph into 100 different scenarios. The new plan is the Hartford plan from the moment that we shifted to it. And so now, when we shift from Hartford, having already captured the benefit as they existed, the previous plan, and they were as good or better, the Hartford, excuse me, is the new standard by which we review further plans in case Aetna. And so, well, there's nothing after that. That's a period. Thank you. And I'll see, I'll check the chat. All right, no, no new question in the chat.
There is a question from Carl Medio. He says he believes a big issue for retirees has been the appeal process. It's something that was previously covered for the retiree is now denied. The process has been cumbersome, to say the least.
Yeah, thanks, Tricia. And that, Moira brought that question up too earlier. And I don't know, Christine, if you maybe just want to do a very short recap for those that might have missed it.
Yep. So as far as the appeal process, and I think what you're referring to is, let's say your doctors bill properly and something just isn't covered for whatever reason, and you think you had that covered before. So you'd come to ENV with your paperwork saying, here you go, here's my bill denied. And, you know, let's say you have a passed bill or an EOB or something like that to say, hey, I think this was covered before. Here's my EOB. We have you sign a HIPAA and we get right to work. Really, this policy is also on the district website. It kind of goes step by step. We really can work quickly if we have all the information. But, you know, if we're missing information, sometimes it can take longer. But we certainly have a dedicated person working on your case and following up, whether it be with Medicare or whomever, to get your issue resolved. And at the end of the day, we'll get you an answer. Either yes, the Exelis plan would have covered this, so we will work with the district to get you reimbursed. Or unfortunately, we reviewed the medical policy. This states that that wouldn't have been covered. So unfortunately, this wouldn't be covered because it wouldn't have been covered before. So that's kind of in a nutshell how the policy works. And that's also, and that's on the district website too. I believe right under the retiree section.
I would just add that I think that when people hear that if they're, they've been denied and they're appealing it, the idea that they should, they should have some kind of paperwork from the Exelis days that would prove it was covered is a lot of people feel like, why would it be supposed that I would have that? I mean, maybe it's a new condition, but, you know, everything that you understood from maybe, you know, colleagues and friends, yeah, they were covered. And so, you know, I certainly don't have any of my paperwork from when I was covered by Exelis Blue Cross Blue Shield.
And I do believe that there is a way to still get into the website to pull up old services too. So let's say you're really stuck and you know, you had something you could log on there. But also, you know, there's other things that we can look into to help members. So just because, you know, you don't necessarily have something from before, doesn't mean we say, oh, sorry, we can't help you. Well, we'll do the best we can with what we have.
There was a comment, I think it's appropriate to put out that, and it's a little bit broken up, but essentially a comment that the Hartford was not equal to or better than Exelis Blue Cross Blue Shield. And we appreciate very much that some retirees have made that item known to us. And we, we do stand by the review that was done, again, including the unions at the time and their Albany offices. So we do appreciate that, but we have, we've met the burden of proof in that original switch. And, and here as well with that.
Tricia, do you see any more comments or questions?
No.
I think, you know, going back to the original conversation regarding the, the customer experience and what that looks like. Because, you know, when you think about our retirees and what they're used to and these changes and how to navigate the space, it can be daunting. And you couple that with a, with a medical condition. So how do we navigate this with their best interest in mind is the ultimate goal for the district?
Yeah.
Any directional help assistance that we can lend before we move forward with this?
Because I do think it's really important what you just said. We're going to shop these plans every few years because that really on the, you know, that really has to be done in, in terms of keeping the expenditure trajectory in check a little bit. But we're not going to make changes unless the trajectory is shifted significantly. This is not worth putting retirees through, even though the, you know, the transition is bureaucratic and that causes stress. So there's no reason to do this for, you know, 10 or even $50,000 in, in in a cost trajectory change, you know, and I don't make that final decision. But my recommendation to the board that does in the future is not to make changes based on that type of switch. This one is, this one is significant over the course of 12 months. And it will fall under two different fiscal periods, but it's, you know, as we said publicly, it's, it's over a million dollars projected. So this is one where my, my advice and recommendation is to, is to make the switch.
Yes. And also keep in mind, we have our call center here. Any retirees can email, call. You know, we're here to help you. And then if an issue is really urgent, it typically gets escalated to me. So the benefit that I have is I know about almost all of the escalated issues that have occurred. And we've already run those by Aetna. In fact, we have a running list. So we've already gone over these issues with Aetna. They're familiar with them and they've given us answers. And actually, that's what helped generate our over 100 question FAQ that's on the district website.
There's a question, will premiums go up? And I'll answer a little as the sort of the novice person here. It's impossible to tell how much premiums will shift from year to year. It's based on, on utilization and the insurance company and their, their figures as well. Historically, health insurance has always increased, sometimes double digits. I remember, you know, 15 years ago, where we were happy if healthcare costs increased at the, you know, 15% rate, 12 to 15%. That's, that's much reduced now, but there's still, the trajectory is upward.
So I hate to put Moira on the spot, however, before we move forward, I want to make sure we take every opportunity to hear everyone possible. Any questions, directional comments, things that can be shared?
Are you asking me directly, Chris?
Yes, I am.
Well, I think, you know, one of my takeaways here is that, you know, listening to Christina is definitely go to ENV, call them. And one of the things Christina said was that they're willing, if it's a problem with the doctor, like, you know, coding it wrong or whatever, they'll do the calling for you. So if you want to make the one call to ENV and say, please contact my doctor, do that. And then I'll finally say, and I, and I do mean this, but I'll be, I may end up being sorry is, I'm a retiree, so I don't have a full-time job and, and I'm healthy. So contact me and I'll do what I can to help. I remember that my father during his last years of life, I was taking care of all his, you know, medical stuff and there was a lot of it. And I remember thinking that I could start a business helping older people who were dealing with Medicare and supplemental insurance and who were also sick that, you know, I could help them navigate the absurdity that I was navigating for my father. So, you know, to my fellow retirees, if you're feeling really frustrated, you've tried something, shoot me an email and I'll see what I can do.
Moira, that is one of the kindest things I think I've heard. I will just jump in that because you're a board member, you cannot actually
Okay.
review medical issues of retirees or any benefit members. But if they have, if they have an issue related to policy or if they have an issue related to, absolutely call you. But with particulars, if there's a bill dispute or if they think something should be covered, definitely ENV. I wanted to remember to say that too, because sometimes folks call here, call me. And it's like, I have absolutely no expertise in the day-to-day ins and outs of medical billing especially. So I just send them on to ENV. And so it's just an added step if they call me or even you. But, but empathy, you get an A+.
Well, that's what we're selling here.
Well, thank you, Moira. That was very big of you. And thank you, Bob, for clarifying that she cannot offer her service. And I'm glad this is recorded because we have it there, but definitely reach out. We can do as much as we possibly can to get you in the right direction with the right resources and supports to make this as seamless as possible. And I just want to reiterate with that mindset of empathy that I recognize that this change in transition is not easy. And especially when it comes to healthcare, you know, as someone who's gone through medical issues and, and things of that nature. One, just dealing with the doctors alone is daunting. So having to deal with the transitions in insurance is equally daunting and frustrating. And that is not our goal. You know, our ultimate goal is to meet the needs of our retirees. And I will end it at that. Any other comments, questions before we move to 5.3?
I don't want to miss any. And one, one final I see in the comment is hospice covered? And I don't, Christina, you're still on, go ahead.
I thought that was mentioned.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Yes, it is. Okay, I'm sorry. I, okay. I think that's it then.
All right. Thank you to everyone. Special thank you to Moira. Really appreciate your, your input. And please continue to email, reach out and connect with us so we can offer the best support possible. So I'll go to 5.3, updates on spending data for reopening ICS.
Hi, Chris, that's me. For those of you that are staying on, I'm Amanda Verba. I'm the Chief Operations Officer. Due to the fact that we knew that this meeting was going to have a lot of content in the first two agenda items, Chris and I agreed, we're, you know, trying to keep people updated in terms of the spending of the reopening. But we may not go deeply, deeply into the weeds like we did the last time. Folks really appreciated the visuals that we provided the last time. So I'm going to try again to just share with you. And if you can give me a second here, the sort of a little bit of a visual again, so that you could sort of see where we are. So again, similar in vein to what we did last time, I minimized some of those pictures so that we can all be reminded of what's going into our reopening plan. And I'm going to just see if I can get this just a little bit bigger here for you.
And Amanda, while you're doing that, I just want to reiterate also that this is going to be an ongoing theme with our finance meetings. We're going to give constant updates on where we're at, what this looks like, just to share forward with the public.
That's right. And, and you know, some of the key elements here, right? So there are number, number one, right? We, it is, it is our obligation to ensure that our buildings are as safe as possible under the circumstances from which people are coming back to our buildings, right? And so some of the strategies and mitigation efforts that we're doing are one-time costs, right? So this year, you're seeing this number here, this 2.3 million, right? In the middle of that screen that is comprehensive, starting July 1. This is after some efforts already occurred from March 13th, when we closed to July 1. This is just representative of this fiscal year, starting July 1. Some of these efforts are, like I said, one-time or the beginning of efforts that will cost a lot, but then can be maintained at a lower cost. So up at that top left corner, you see a group of items that are a lot of logos. It's really representative of some of the HVAC partnerships that we've had. HVAC and most importantly ventilation, right? Goal is to get fresh air into our buildings, circulate air that has been filtered and get air out and do that as much as we can. If you were at the facilities committee meeting, you would have heard all of the strategies that we've taken to evaluate, identify, mitigate. And then if we find deeper issues, try to address it if they're so big that we actually, they're more like a controls issue that we couldn't just have sort of a short-term intervention strategy. That will go to the capital project. But everything that you see represented in the facilities committee and the minutes to those. And then we'll continue to talk about our efforts around ventilation and filtration of our air. That, that sort of takes up that top left corner there. That is the majority of the cost that you see in the middle of that screen. The folks from Train continue to send us sort of as they're discovering and going deeper into the systems. If they find things that we believe that we can, you know, handle right now and are directly related to ventilation, we're repairing it. So we might get an invoice or a proposal for work. Just recently, we got something for $170,000 at the high school. So if you looked from last month to this month, that's why you're seeing this number go up. That work is ongoing. And as reported in the facilities committee meeting, we anticipate that that work will be done as close, you know, all the way through October 5th, when we reopen our buildings to our students and our staff to come in in a long range, a long term a day. If you kind of want to go, maybe we'll go around sort of clockwise, right? Then we have a picture of the sanitation system. That actually, the amount of money that I sort of presented last time, that's pretty much where it should be. We've ordered plenty of units and replacement units. The thing that will continue to increase there are the chemicals. The thing that will continue to increase there are the chemicals that are used for sanitation. They're pre-mixed. It doesn't put anybody at risk. They've actually, they need all the standards and requirements for utilization in school buildings, which is the highest safety standard often compared to even hospitals. And so these are items that they will be misted on surfaces. You let them sit and they actually are for sanitation, i.e. they will kill viruses. It's not just cleaning, but it's actually sanitation. If you then go a little bit further over, sort of in that kind of area of the slide there, you'll see the green chair. You'll see some polycarbonate dividers. You'll see desks. Below that, at the bottom, you'll actually see some other colorful things. That's a new purchase. One, in the, in the facilities committee meeting, it was mentioned that there's been a lot of discussion around outdoor learning strategies. Those desks, if you take a look at those, they actually have a seat that is padded, that goes down on the ground, and then you sort of wrap your legs around and you have this desk in front of you. We're going to be ordering a number of units for each elementary to have a stack that they can actually wheel out. We're getting also the equipment to bring them in and out and be able to stack easily. They're light, they're weather resistant. When they're out in the sun, the rays actually do the work of sanitation for us. The rain does that. It's really, they're fantastic items. So we can bring them in, bring them out. And that's one strategy that we'll have for outdoor learning. Next to that is sort of a similar kind of whiteboard to the polycarbonate. Just another model of a room divider that we're looking into. Next to that are some stools, and then above the stool, the bottom, there are some desks that go from standing to sitting, because we recognize you're going to be in the same space, but we still want to gain some movement. I'm going to stick over here, sort of in this right-hand corner, so that, and then I'll go back down to the left-hand corner. So it's not quite a clock, I apologize. But those were the two pictures of, at the time that I presented to you last month, strategies for our buses. So since I spoke to you last month, some things have changed, some positive things have changed. We are now allowed to have actual hand sanitizer units on our buses. So that's going to, those have been, are, they are being installed and will be installed by the time we have young people riding on our buses. And so that's another strategy to be able to manage, you know, any, any potential movement of that virus from one person to another. So we know that hand sanitizing and hand washing is really imperative, along with mask-wearing and physical distancing. We also know that having barriers such as face shields, or even the plastic barriers that you see that look like sort of shower curtains, those are going to be installed in our buses. We, at the time that I spoke to you, we had an initial quote, that quote now, to have installed in our buses. We found a company that will actually do the installation, as well as has the equipment. I believe that that was upwards of about $70,000 for our buses to be equipped with that. So that is an update from the last time that, that we, that I presented to you. Down at the, I'm going to just shift to the diagonal and now go down to the bottom left corner. We've had some more requests for those portable sink units that are next to the Flex wipes, which are the approved wipes. You know, we can get name-brand wipes in the grocery stores. These are the approved wipes for school districts. Everything has to be fire-rated. They have to have a certain type of paperwork that, that actually shows that they are safe to use. And, you know, that, that don't have allergens or that won't cause reactions. So Flex wipes are the one thing. And the sink units next to them are the other. We've gotten more requests for those. We described in facilities that we actually are leasing those units, and we did that for a reason. Many, all the other things you see, we're buying, those we're leasing because they're seasonal. And it didn't make sense for us to buy units, try to find a space to be able to store those units over the winter months, and then bring them back out of storage and have them ready to go. We actually are leasing them for the months that we need them. And then the company comes back and they will take them and then put them into storage for us. They are really popular and principals even wanted them on, in some of the indoor spaces where they felt like having an extra handwashing station was going to be really beneficial. And so we're working with principals to identify that. If they are inside the building, our own staff will be managing them, meaning that they will be filling them with water, making sure the soap is filled, and then handling the gray water, meaning the water that was, after you wash your hands, it goes into a bin or basin, and then that's removed. If they're outside the company, part of the lease of that is that they actually manage that for us, all of that. And they have quite regular inspections of those, making sure that those units are filled. I just found out that we had an enormous supply of, I think it's like three months' worth, supply of pediatric-style masks that are coming in. We've also been working with different departments to, if there were a particular style mask that folks wanted. So whether it be a fabric mask, we were, been working and vetting those masks with Kerry Burke, our Director of School Health and Wellness, to ensure that they, they meet sort of the requirements for masks. There's lots of different types out there. Not all of them are effective. And so, you know, we continue to make sure that we have a plentiful supply. I think when we, when we looked at this, we determined that, you know, a student could go through two to three masks a day if they, if they really needed, and we wanted to be prepared for that. So that's, that's the sort of supply that I'm talking about. I know that Paul Alexander's team, he's our Director of Facilities, has found space down at Hancock Street, which is where our maintenance and technology teams work. We also have PD space there. But they're using every inch possible to be able to dry store these items, so that we know that we have them ready to go. There's also a whole protocol in place that, that Paul has been working with his team and the custodians to be able to work through the requests, through the work order system, so that they can manage when the supply is getting to, to a point that we would typically maybe call in an order. We actually will replenish that, and then the order will happen centrally through the central office. So that, that's all been worked through. There are also going to be stations at all the schools set up. So tables, desks will have hand sanitizers, masks, gloves. We will be working through PPE requests. So PPE is personal protective equipment, including the things that I mentioned, but also things like maybe gowns or larger shirts that you could put over your clothing, face shields. And those are plentiful, and we've been ordering them. So what you see there in that middle of the screen, sort of that, that number right now, is the number that we're tracking at as of this date in time to manage all of the health and safety requirements, and then some. We are taking the standard and going beyond it to ensure that our buildings and our people feel safe, they feel ready, and that our district is ready to support the teaching and learning within our spaces. And there's one other thing that I wanted to mention, and those are the, the temperature checks or thermometers down there at the bottom. I know that we have had staff, as well as principals and our PTAs, working within communities to ensure that families, if they so need thermometers, that there's an active dialogue to, to work with families, that if they need a thermometer, we're going to find ways to be able to get that as well. And so, so that's, that's something that, that we're thinking through and, and offering through our networks and our collaborations. There's just fantastic community support in so many ways. So those are some of the, the costs to date. I hope that that covered some of the, I, the fears right still that are, that are here, the concerns, the wonderings. And we'll be working with Casey to ensure that these, these items are getting out there, both visually, through tweets, through posts on our website, through FAQs, in our letters. We've also developed a family handbook that will be going out to buildings that they can populate with their building-specific information, that also gives an overview of all this. Not from a finance perspective, from just a health and safety perspective, so that they know that, that they, that, you know, everything is being covered. So Chris, that's, that's sort of the overview to date.
Thank you very much. I just want to clarify, Amanda said that, you know, name-brand wipes are available. No, they're not.
It's hard to find them. That's right.
And actually, you definitely are correct. You need to have a certain level of antibacterial cleaning capability to those. Unfortunately, I'm well-versed and have been well-versed since the beginning of March in this. And one thing I want to really stress to the public is the need for any entity to literally create a new department/team/protocol/systems to navigate this. This is a whole new program for any entity to manage. And if you think about it on the scale of a school district, where you have, you know, children involved and, and coming and going, and every other complexity imaginable, it gets daunting. And we really need to take a step back and look at it. I, you know, thank you so much for doing this, but there's a lot more layers. This is the thousand-foot view, but the everyday, every interaction, every moment practice is a whole different story. So, and I'm sure there will be more to follow once we get into the, what this really looks like with the boots on the ground and every interaction. So thank you, Amanda.
Of course.
All right. So that was the last discussion meeting item. Do we have any other updates?
Chris, yeah, this is Erin. This came up in our meeting before the facilities meeting. Sorry, I'm just exhausted. I just want to make sure I say this right, but you know, we, we've been talking in legislative advocacy, and we've been talking about other things. This is new business. And, but it's so important looking at the potential cuts and talking about potential budget cuts. And I don't know if Amanda wants to mention it briefly. I don't know. I think Anne is still here, but we talked about it in this meeting about the advocacy that we need to do, potentially reaching out to our unions to share personal stories, you know, about how these cuts, if they are to happen, will impact them tremendously, and choosing a few representatives to share stories about the potential of what this is going to do. And I mean, given everything that's going on right now and how chaotic it is, I think we do kind of need to bring it up even now, even though this meeting is already well over time, just to, yeah, I'm sorry. I hope I.
Erin, I, Erin, I can absolutely, I can absolutely support you. So, so it's really based on, last month, if you remember, Emily Shite presented about state aid, right? And so we know right now, districts across the state, 20% of their aid, their state aid, their total state aid is being withheld at the state level. It is yet to be determined if that will be, that withholding will actually result in a cut, right? So right now, there is a withholding of that state aid, and we have yet to know if any of that money will trickle back into the districts, even though those, that was all part of our state aid runs. We all anticipated that that was coming our way, and so right now it's a withholding. There is a lot of talk depending on sales tax revenues and the state of the economy across, right? The, the, the state, the state of the economy across New York State, right? What, if any of that money will be needed to support at the state level, right? If they have a deficit. And so there's a lot of conversation about how that is going on the backs of school districts during this time, where you can see on just this slide alone, the amount of investment we're making in our buildings, in our people, in our safety, in our, like, the basics, right? The basic needs, and, and the potential to lose $6.6 million for the, alone, right? And if you start to look at our colleagues and our, you know, our districts near us, our neighbors, this is an enormous impact. So there was a lot of conversation of legislative action, as well as even last month, when we sort of like, you know, had sort of conversations after Emily's presentation about, to Erin's point, this should be on everybody's radar. And how might we be able to work with the unions, right? The bargained units here in our district, because this is about, this will ultimately be about our people. There is, if this withholding actually becomes a cut, there's not enough operations budget in anybody's, in anybody's budget, us or anybody else, that, that would be able to absorb that kind of withholding that turns into a cut. It would actually equate to real people potentially being laid off, losing their jobs. And so Erin's point was, let's start now. Anne was on the call, Brad Granger was on the call. We had Jeff Madison on the call, Dr. Brown, right? Trying to determine kind of how might we work together that this is what's on the radar. We know that reopening is on the radar, but this is, this is like the imperative as well, right? Erin, to kind of share that, that, that time and space with reopening planning, so that we can advocate for all of us to keep our school districts whole in terms of the state aid that was, that we had budgeted for in terms of revenue. Erin, did I get that?
Spot on, Amanda.
Got it. So Chris, that, that was the new item, and I think the question was sort of like, could, might we bring this up at the next finance meeting, really having this as an agenda item, but in the interim, might we be thinking about who the partners are, and maybe even getting them thinking and inviting them to come together to start to talk, start to talk about this? And I know Anne offered legislative action as well as a time that this could be, you know, we could have the conversation.
Yeah. And what I'll do, I think, Amanda, you, myself, Anne can get together, kind of see what that looks like. Is it finance or is it legislative advocacy? And we're the best lane for that, but thanks to both of you, you know? And when you look at the total expenditure, then you take into the state aid withheld, the addition, when you add all that together, it's truly impactful and detrimental to us, to our operations. So no, thanks to both of you. Thanks for your clarification. Thanks to Erin for bringing that up.
Oh, sorry, Anne. Well, I just want to add that, that given how hard this year has been for parents, for staff, for teachers, for admin, I think that the sooner that we kind of put this out there and just really put it out there, the better. Like, this will likely happen in some capacity. Let's prepare for it. It stinks colossally, and we're doing everything we can. I think, you know, we always talk about that transparency piece. And I think there have been so many blows to everyone this year, that, that the more that we can just say, look, this is up next, all right? 2020, what else can come at us? Well, this is what's coming next, and this is.
When you talk about the transparency piece, this is the reality piece of it. Okay, let's, let's talk about the reality. This is what we're facing unbeknownst to us. We didn't, we didn't create this. We didn't, this isn't any misappropriation. This is what we have to deal with and navigate.
Yeah, I just want to add that legislative advocacy is, we're just starting to begin discussions with Bozies. That's why we had Jeff and Brianna on the call, because we think it's going to affect every single school district in the state. It's going to be adversely impacted. And the more information that we have, the more joint, you know, the more we can work together and kind of make the issue known, I think the better. And one of the things that came up in that conversation is to try to grasp a better understanding of what these impacts on our district could be in real terms. And so that will make it, in terms of advocacy, more effective. And then Erin also pointed out that knowing it, how it feels, and what it could feel like in terms of those experiences really matters. So, yeah. So I think it is hard to focus on it, and we're trying to get school to be reopened, you know, with everything that entails. But it is very much on the horizon, because nobody so far has managed to bring money to the schools or the states. And they're, just don't seem to be going anywhere.
Hey, Anne, just a quick question. Is this, would it behoove us to do this as a single school district or as a group of school districts?
Well, that's what we were talking about. I think this is going to be as, potentially worse than the GEA. Amanda, would you agree with that? And I think the, the way that the GEA was eventually overturned was because every school district in the state, and all of the parents and the PTAs, and the unions, and, you know, everybody was so impacted by it. I think alone as a single school district, well, I just think it's so much bigger than that. I think alone as a single school district, well, I just think it's so much bigger than that.
Yeah, I mean, obviously I don't have a crystal ball as to what the future holds, right? That's, that's super challenging, was super challenging back at the GEA. The difference that I, that I see that's really concrete to me is that with, with the GEA, that was before there was a tax cap. And that's, that's important to state because when the GEA occurred, districts were still able to have some local opportunity to go out to their voters, plead their case about what, what it took to pay for the type of education that you wanted to deliver in your community. And taxpayers had the opportunity, right, to be able to vote for that amount of taxes that needed to be levied to support the school district. With a tax cap now in place for school districts, there is still tremendous misunderstanding about that, right? So number one, you need a supermajority to be able to override the tax cap. Number two, there is still misperceptions that if you were to override the tax cap, to be able to levy more than what your tax cap calculation allows you, which is sometimes 2%, right? If you're lucky, we're, we get sometimes more, mainly because we're doing capital projects. But what people believe is that if you go over the tax cap, there is still this myth out there that somehow that impacts your STAR, your STAR reimbursement. And that was a misperception because it was, the STAR was part of a calculation that for a couple of years, they had a penalty. If a taxing entity went over the tax cap, that is now no longer in existence. But we all know that changing narrative and changing belief is really, really difficult to, to evaluate and give new information to, right? This is, this is just, this is, this is difficult work, regardless of the topic. And so I just, I just want, I think, Anne, to your point, that's where I see the challenge, right? In terms of, of what we might be facing, because that's just going to mean a lot of education. And it means that we're going to have to find ways to get to people to get that education to them. And that, that's, that's a real challenge for school districts when we talk about even just, you know, like curriculum and instruction, right? So I just, just to think about even folks that don't have kids in their, in the school district who are paying taxes, that's really the challenge for me that I see.
And just to add one more thing, just to the impacts, if these become permanent cuts, the thing that you said to us, let's say advocacy that just really hits is the fact that the cuts are not just foundation aid. The cuts are like BOSIs aid, transportation aid, building aid. And I mean, that, that, I just, I can't even get my head around it if, if that comes to pass. I mean, that's serious.
Right. And it's withholding right now, potentially cuts, right? We, many districts are saying, wait a minute. We know that reimbursement aids are based on our behaviors. We spend it because we believe that we're getting it back. Some of these reimbursements aids are for projects and capital projects that were voter-approved, that we were allowed to do, and we went out to the voters to be, and knowing that we were going to get aid back on that. So right now, it's a withholding, but Anne, you are right. This is definitely larger in scope than what we believed or what the literature sort of told us. We, I think all business officials would tell you that, you know, when, when this was happening, March, April, May, June, we were all in belief that it was foundation aid, meaning the formula aid, right? Our, our wealth ratio, the number of students we have, there's a huge formula that there's factors that go into that. It's not about behavior and what you, what you purchase. It's actually about, I'm just, you're sort of the state of who you are as a district. And we were all surprised that the withholding was inclusive of all state aid.
Okay, folks.
Not a great way to end, Chris. I'm sorry. It's like one of those movies of like, really, really, that?
You know what? This is the reality. We have to navigate it. We have to get, you know, manage it as best we possibly can, and that's, that's where we're at.
So Anne, Chris, Erin, you know, we'll collaborate. I think, I'm not sure, I'll make sure that I know when legislative action is. I don't know if that's a time, Anne, when we want to continue to invite like Jeff Madison to come on, so we can at least hear what we're doing. I know Dr. Brown, he's going to mention this at the Supes meeting and try to get this on the radar. I think some of the suggestions that we had was gathering data right now, right? Average salaries across the region, trying to get some sense of like, what would this mean collectively? Just even the TST BOSIs region to show in, in our community the impact that that lack of revenue would have on this community, not just if it's specific. I think this is everyone's issue.
Absolutely. All right, folks. I'm trying to think of a positive. But anybody else have anything they'd like to share before we wrap this one up?
I'll just add a positive. So I'm listening to all my kids, helping them learn, and the teachers are doing so amazing. They really are, and so are the students. So we have that.
Yes, and thank you for that because my granddaughter has had two days of virtual school, and she is loving it, and she had gym today. And she was showing me everything they went through. And actually, I'm in trouble because she just went to bed and I did not get to finish that. So I have more gym class to learn. All right, folks. Everybody, please be safe and take care of yourselves.
Thanks, Chris. Good night. Good night, everyone.